Uh, trustee Bloom.
I want time here.
She is ready to go. Uh, trustee Cradie?
I'm here as well.
Sitting trustee Miller?
Here.
Sitting trustee Miller?
Here.
And then just D Neilson?
Right.
I've been looking at Peter's name and looking at your face. Joshua, would you like to call the call for?
Oh, yeah, um. Let's take a roll for it. So VP Oken is not president or not present. VP Toy not present. EP Iskara?
Yeah.
And trustee Andachi?
Here.
Advocate Farmer?
Not here.
Nuara?
Isn't present.
Hofstadter is not present. Curry not present. Jason's not present and Kenyon's not present. Depending on my secretary.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, welcome everyone to a special board meeting to join me with the Board of Trustees and the Student Senate. We will now move to identity politics public comments items. Members of the public have the opportunity to directly address the board on any item described in the notice for this meeting before the board's disposition of that item. Unless otherwise determined by the board, each person is limited to five minutes. Those wishing to address the board at this time should complete a request, and if you have so. And so for those of us present, I'll just remind you for any of our speakers, if you have any technical questions or clarifying statements, we'll continue, but we will not have any comments or discussions. So if you wanna just give me a second or a clarifying statement, and I can address that with no comments or discussion. And so our first speaker this afternoon, Ellen Carey, wishing to address the board on campus culture and professional discourse. I mean, do you want me to do a comment? And if you would wish to be on camera, we'll ask you to stand up directly in front of the first chair adjacent to this room.
I don't care either way. Do you care whether I'm on camera?
It's totally your preference.
Okay, I'll just stand here.
Okay.
So I can see everyone better.
Perfect.
Well, hello, and thank you for hearing my public comments. At recent board meetings, you've heard public comments raising concerns about campus communication and a lack of administrative leadership regarding the legal case between Ray and Napoleon and invited speaker Michael Shermer. And I'm one of the faculty members who replied to an all-campus email thread with factual information and my own opinion, stated clearly as my own opinion, that Shermer's behavior constituted bullying. In response, I received a personal reply from another faculty member claiming that I had made arguments I didn't make, accusing me of attacking him, the faculty member, personally, and questioning my professional integrity as a librarian. This caustic, aggressive, and personal reply to my well-reasoned expression of fact and opinion based on factual evidence is an example of a kind of hostile communication that has been tolerated on this campus for too long. It appears that the administration may be taking this particular case more seriously after much prodding from many faculty and students, including those who have spoken here before, and I hope that's the case. But the email I received from my colleague, like similar emails sent to other faculty members, was, in my opinion, indicative of a larger cultural problem here at SBCC. Our campus culture has allowed disrespectful and bullying behavior by faculty members, something that disproportionately affects those who are already most marginalized, to continue without consequence and without constructive intervention from the administration. To be clear, I am not advocating for the restriction of free speech. We should provide as many opportunities and modes for the free exchange of ideas as possible, but free speech is one thing and bullying is another. We, as an institution, need to figure out where to draw that line, how to prevent bullying, and how to take appropriate and swift action when it occurs. As a higher education institution, engaging in intellectual discussion and debate is something we do and something we teach students to do. But we have a problem when we hold students to a higher standard of civil discourse, information literacy, critical thinking, and well-reasoned evidence-based argument than the standard to which we hold ourselves as faculty. We have a problem when students get a pass for behaving in ways that would earn a student a D on a paper or a visit to the dean's office. I understand that the line between free speech and bullying or hate speech is not always a clear one, and that we may disagree on how to define civil discourse. But the substance of our campus dialogue on these issues should center on where and how we make those distinctions. We need standards of behavior and communication, and we need to hold ourselves and each other accountable to those standards, as we do with students. We need to address breaches of those standards individually, the way we would do with students in our classes, rather than shutting down discourse altogether. I doubt that any of us would eliminate class discussions from a course because one student was using that forum to bully another student. I know that the Academic Senate plans to discuss possible policies for appropriate email contact conduct, and I think that's a step in the right direction. But the campus culture that allows bullying to go unchecked will not be fixed solely by adopting better email policies. I'm concerned that some policies, such as requiring moderation for the all-campus email list, would delay access to important information and give too much power to administrative gatekeepers, who, however unintentionally, may amplify voices that already tend to be heard and further marginalize those that already tend to be silenced. Instead of considering measures to quell or limit intellectual discourse, our administration should be providing leadership and facilitating campus dialogue about what civil discourse means to us as an institution, what training may be necessary to better equip everyone in our campus community to communicate respectfully, and how we should take action in cases where members of our community do not live up to the standards we set for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to note that trustee Hassling has joined us, and Joshua, did you have any additional members joining?
Um, I think some of them had some things that had come up. There were supposed to be a couple more. That is not one of them. Oh, Crystal Farmer, we have, and Kenyon, so.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And then I felt to note that trustee Zou is joining us virtually, and so he is out at room, and you see him speak. We have the second speaker, Alex Medjoe.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you very much, everyone. I hope you're having a wonderful day. Very frequently, I get mistaken for being a philosophy major, and in fact, that just happened today. The reason why that's the case is because very often what I do when I discuss things with other people is I like to get to the root cause and the root meaning of a particular issue or problem. I'm sure lots of you recall, last week I made a public comment concerning students that are in five different categories: libertarians, conservatives, Christians, homeschoolers, and Trump supporters. The reason why, and I don't believe I fully addressed this last week, the reason why they're so marginalized is because this campus has embraced identity politics. And the major philosophical problem I have with identity politics is it allows us to ignore what a person says and go to their identity. It allows us to override what they think and the facts they give simply because of their identity. They may not be a proper, of a enough marginal, historically marginalized group to have enough validity. And that's very, very worrisome to me, because if a student who has historically not been marginalized, then don't they have the, then why should they not have the right to have, share opinions with other students who have been marginalized? And equal, and look at both issues and both ideals with a critical, both analyze the facts. I wanted to make that clarification, and I also wanted to make an apology. As of last week, I did not offer any solutions. Now I'd like to offer some solutions to the Board of Trustees and to the ASG. One solution that I would recommend is encourage opposing points of view. It's encouraging, encouraging group think and an echo chamber when everyone agrees with what everyone else says. If there are no opposing points of view, then students will leave here believing that they are right and they have all the facts, when indeed they're missing the views of homeschoolers, the views of Christians, the views of pro-Trump supporters, et cetera, et cetera, conservatives, libertarians. I'd also recommend we implement an obludism method. Apologize, my channel is not too great, but some sort of mediator or arbitrator that is less connected with the faculty and administration. I realize that there are already certain offices one may take if they believe that they're being discriminated against, which is wonderful, but I also would encourage the Board of Trustees to consider some mediator or third-party person for any such dispute to go off, to come to. And I also would like to encourage.
Two minutes.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to encourage the trustee to consider changing the culture. I understand that you don't have full control over the culture. I fully recognize that, but there are certain steps to take. For example, asking professors in their, either their syllabus or within the faculty, within the lecture, to include suggestions such as, if you believe I've said anything offensive to you, or you wish that you'd like to challenge anything I've said, but not within the sphere of the classroom with all your students, either come to my office hours or take it to said mediator. These are merely suggestions in order to create a more open-minded campus, a more free campus, where people are not afraid to share views. And I thank you very much, all, for your time, for your support, and for your care and passion in listening to what I have to say. Thank you, and God bless each other.
Thank you. We have a third speaker, Celeste Barber.
My seat is a little more comfortable sitting down.
Absolutely.
My name is Celeste Barber, and some of you may remember me. I taught here in the English Department for two years until I retired just several years ago. And I'm here specifically to speak to my concerns about what's happening to the First Amendment on this campus, but also on campuses nationwide. I am not addressing the Michael Shermer issue, but I believe that what I say is very closely aligned to what the previous speaker said. First, I would like to state that politically, I am just left of center, but above that, I have just a deep abiding love of the Constitution. I treasure it. I want to protect it, and I think we should all protect it, especially the Bill of Rights. I'm just passionate about that, so politically, I guess I'd be a constitutionalist. And what has been going on on this campus and others has been a continuation of something that happened maybe 20, 30 years ago, which is the orthodoxy of the far, far left seems to have taken hold, foothold, and silenced those with other opinions, not simply conservatives or libertarians, but anybody who does not hold lockstep with the far, far left and their ideology. This is something very different from what I grew up with. I came of age in the late 60s and early 70s. I had a time of great turmoil on our campuses. I lived down in the valley. I remember Cal State Northridge happened there. We all know locally, the Isla Vista riots, Kent State. I will never get over that, what happened there. But what's happening now is a silencing. And it's, it's those, those people who disagree, not simply students, but also faculty and staff, they are silenced, they are invisible, and I think that's even more dangerous. Because at least in the 60s, we had newspapers, we had TV coverage, you could see what was going on with the National Guard. How do you report silencing? How do you report people who are intimidated, teachers who may be intimidated to offer something on a syllabus? The last year I taught here, I changed my syllabus to include, to be focused on the First World War in my literature class. It was suggested to me by one of my colleagues, a woman whom I respect deeply, and it was well-respected throughout this campus, that I not teach that course, because some students might be offended by what I was teaching, might be harmed by what I was teaching. She was specifically referring to veterans. I taught the course. It was the best thing I ever did, because it was the most moral course, those two courses that I ever taught. We read all quiet on the Western Front. We read the war poetry. How many? Two minutes? Of British poets, many who died in the trenches. Two, several years ago, my last semester here, we had the TP controversy, as you will recall. It went up and it came down. Lost in that was the reasons why those art students created it. It was during midterm time. It was supposed to be on West Campus, a place where students could go to get rid of the stress, to just relax. That was lost. Also lost in that one side of debate was the First Amendment, freedom of expression, freedom of speech, freedom to defend what they have done, a work of art. This is a serious, serious issue. Today, I believe you're going to be talking about your mission statement, correct? That's what you're working on? This is the most important admission statement for every American or every person who desires to become an American. I started carrying a copy of it in my purse right after Patriot Act was passed under the George W. Bush administration. Mine's annotated, maybe because I'm an English teacher, and I keep extra copies all the time. They're pretty cheap. I'm gonna leave you with some copies here, and I hope that you will refer to it, especially the Bill of Rights. It's not a gift for me. It's a gift from the founders, especially James Madison. This is what you are here to be committed to, to uphold it, to share it with your students, to make sure that they are protected by it at all times, all students. Thank you very much. Good luck, everyone.
Thank you all. You'll forgive me, I haven't prepared remarks for today, because it doesn't seem like I should have to do that. I have finals, I have presentations to be making in my courses, and the campus newspaper informs me that there's a council of staff, of adults on this campus, who are considering restricting free speech among themselves. I haven't seen enough disapproving facial expressions from board members when those ideas are broached to have any confidence that you don't agree with those ideas. I would echo what Celeste said. I'd be happy to have one of those copies. Thank you. It's always appreciable to appreciate the founding documents of this country. There's a lot of wisdom in them. You can get a doctorate without reading that. I graduated from high school. I took advanced courses in US government. Nowhere in the course materials could I access that. Wasn't available in any of the appendices. Awfully surprising. In Board Policy 3900, Speech Time, Place, and Manner of Speech, it says, "Employees have the greatest possible access. It's particularly important that students, faculty, and other employees have the greatest possible access and ability to use the district's property and facilities for expressive activities." Under academic freedom, it begins, "Freedom is essential if our institution is to make its proper contribution." It says faculty members should allow the expression of differing points of view. There's something that probably would be inappropriate, and it's shown on the back of this speaker form I was asked to fill out twice, not once, but twice. It does mention that defamatory allegations are not appropriate. There's been the suggestion that certain groups of people in particular might feel silenced on this campus. I'm echoing another one of our commenters tonight. I'm not sure that she and I would agree on which groups those might be. I think there are some groups that have a large vocal voice on campus. And they don't seem to be silenced at all. They seem to have every opportunity to speak and to be uplifted institutional and specially. So I'm trying to expand my vocabulary this week. It seems to me that there are some shenanigans which have caused a kerfuffle involving malarkey that may reach the level of a brouhaha based on the misdirected concepts of one or more nincompoops. So I've completed my assignment to myself. One of those groups was Christians. Something to be learned from James Madison, from this document. There's something to be learned from Christianity. There's a lot of wisdom in those years of writing. In James 3.1, or 3.1, it reads, "Not many of you should presume to be teachers. You'll be held to a higher standard." So these are all things that we have to think about for ourselves. Decorum, proper treatment of other people, they can't really be legislated, and we have to tolerate some of that. Some people don't know how to dress. They don't know how to shake hands. They wear their sunglasses indoors. They say the wrong things. They sneeze on you. We have to tolerate it, and each one of us should consider reducing the amount of offense that we cause to other people. But certainly, we shouldn't restrict free speech, especially among you. That doesn't, doesn't affect me. I'm concerned about you being able to have a conversation with each other.
Thank you. Bye, the scene. Thank you. Sitting trustee, there are conditions.
I just wanted to say really quickly. Is it okay if I say this? I just wanted to say, hearing all of that, we don't specifically have an item to speak about the most marginalized students on campus, but I think it deserves a proper response. The most marginalized students on campus, I would say, are homeless students. I would say minorities, students that are of a minority background. That's just a fact. I mean, it's not something that we can disagree on. It's just like, look at the statistics. And so I think every event that clubs have come to the ASG with, we've approved, if I'm not mistaken. But I think that, just for the board's knowledge, we have very, very marginalized groups on this campus. I don't think that we should be confused about that and say that they're Trump supporters. I think we should say that they're students that can't graduate or transfer, or who have a hard time learning at this institution because of economic reasons, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. That brings us to item 41, discussion between Board of Trustees and the Assistant City Government. And it's one item, but it's loaded with some subtopics. Create and enhance an environment of civility, and I will move to Dr. Bibi to give us.
Kind of frame, you're glad to do that. First of all, I appreciate all the speakers that shared their ideas with us, and in many ways, those are important concepts for all of us to remember in this particular conversation about civility. But before I get into that, I want to just say that, and acknowledge that we're making history here today in having this joint Board of Trustees meeting and joint Associate Student Government meeting. To our knowledge, anyway, and Josh and I were talking about this, and even I talked about it. I don't think it's ever been, it's ever been done before. So I mean, this is, this is making history, and it's probably long overdue. I mean, you know, some of the things that have been in the works and have been discussed here. In terms of this item of civility, you know, I really liked a lot of things all the speakers said in some ways, but I think Professor Carey really kind of hit it when she talked about the civil discourse that we have at the college and being able to treat people with civility, respect, and dignity. And I think that, you know, as she pointed out, it really isn't, it's not just about putting in a mechanism to control or moderate the email system. I mean, that, that, that isn't, that isn't gonna solve the problem. It's just gonna move the forum to somewhere else. It's really about our behavior and how we want to treat each other as human beings, and our demeanor, and how we want to approach each other. And in many ways, at least in my opinion, I believe that it's, this is a symptom of a grander environment. I've been talking with colleges across the country, and they're saying that there's lots of disruption on their campus, whether it's in Ohio, or Texas, or Wyoming, or wherever it might be. There's similar kinds of incivility, if you will, that's taking, taking place across, across the United States. And I do believe that the things that are happening in Washington DC and in other places is creating an environment that is causing stress on all of us. And that stress is being coming to, to a head in terms of our, our own behaviors. And what I don't want to have happen is that external environment to shape who we are and define who we are at Santa Barbara City College. And I think that we need to resist that at all possible junctures and make sure that we really think about who we are, what our values are, and how we want to treat each other. And that we do want to be respectful of each other's points of view. That's what we're here for. We're here to learn. You know, we're all here to learn about new ideas, and if, if we already think we have the answers to those, to our questions, or we already think we know it all, then we probably don't need to be here. We probably don't want to be here. It's probably not the environment that we want to be in. So this particular conversation, starting with our students to be able to explore ideas, to be able to create and enhance an environment that is better for all of us in this learning community we call Santa Barbara City College, I think is most appropriately started with the students. And my hope is, is that it will carry on through the rest of the college, through the, I know it's gonna come to the president's cabinet when it comes to the African Senate, it'll certainly come to the College Planning Council, our, our top broadest governance committee, and permeate through the rest of the, of the institution, but I think it really is most appropriate to start with the students and get their ideas, get their feedback, and how we can shape this conversation going forward. I hope this is, this is a productive meeting. I know it'll be a productive meeting and a learning experience for all of us. There's your opening remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Bibi. So seeing as there's a number of us around the table, and there's a number of guests that we would welcome, their feedback. So I will request that we limit our individual comments to two minutes each, if anybody chanced, and let me know.
Glad you needed that real before, or after I.
You are president. You have from kind of breaking this last week. I will not be able to direct anyone else, but you. With that, we can open up the discussion, because this is why we're here, and members sitting outside are taking a piece.
Hello, Matthew Iskara. Since free speech is kind of what we're talking about with all the public comment, your opening remarks. I did want to bring up one edit. I could, I would like to suggest to AP 3900, I'm on my way out, so finishing up my turn. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to bring before BAP, but it's only to.
But it's only to section one where it designates what areas are allowed for expressive speech. So under the East Campus category, I would like to add at least somewhere around the Administration Building. I noticed that the Administration Building is the only thing that's omitted from this list. Like, it is very generous. It does not impede on the idea of free speech zones. Check Coxby, New Hampshire, which set the precedent. There's also Shawfer's Pierce College down in SoCal. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of it. So I think the time, place and manner restrictions are fine as is regarding like the actual technical policy we have. But I would like to see the Administration Building, not within it, but somewhere outside it. Either it could be that courtyard or along that little drive thru or that driveway on the side over here or like open up the grass area because I think if people are going to protest anywhere on campus and if it's not for national or state or local political reasons, it's going to be because they have an issue with the Administration. And so I think the Administration are big boys. I think that everyone can handle it. Big boys and big girls. I think you guys can handle. Handle, yeah, big people. Sorry, I'm nervous. But I mean, I think that there shouldn't be that much of a disconnect, at least physically where people can protest. So with that, I yield the rest of my thoughts.
Can we have questions? So I'm the new kid on the block here. And you mentioned AP or BP 3900?
AP 3900, time, place and manner.
Is that a short policy you could read to me or is it too long?
It's three pages long. So it just sets the time, place and manner for free speech. Again, there's precedent under Coxby, New Hampshire, which like gave administrations the ability to set reasonable restrictions on college campuses.
So this, so this policy lays out the time, place and manner that's accepted.
For the school specifically.
The school?
Yes.
And you're suggesting, again, what revision to that?
The only revision I have is I would like to see at least somewhere around the Administration Building, an area where people can practice free speech. Because again, if people are going to have issues on this campus, chances are it's going to be with the Administration. I mean, I don't see anything in the near future about that, but in the long term, who knows? Obviously, relationships are dynamic. We never stated.
Okay, thank you. That's all good.
I just have a point of order. That item, we were going to speak about that. I think that's under Equity Around Students. I just wanted to point that out.
Just thinking that it might involve a lot of them.
So I actually sent a document just so everybody can visually see what Associated Student Government wanted to go over. And it's in your email, it's possible to pull that up or if everybody just wanted to go off of their laptops.
I think we'll go off of the four plates that are there.
Oh, yeah, that's fine too.
Yeah, and they can see them. They're sort of, I think, summarized and kind of condensed that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we have a Associated Student Government put together document of some things under each of these three categories. Mostly the first two, Equity Around SBCC, Associated Student Government, and the Equity Around Students. So, yeah, and I do want to say before we start with that, that this is a milestone. And I'm very proud to be a part of this meeting today. Never seen this happen out of the five years I've been, or four years I've been in the student government. So thank you for having us. So starting off with the Equity Around SBCC ASG, I didn't know how you wanted to.
Do you want to stick with the first one first?
Oh, we're just going through civility.
Oh, civility first. Oh, okay. Civility, I didn't have that on, sorry.
Yeah, so just as a point of clarification, AP 3900 went through all of our Governance Groups. It was shared at BPAP with revisions to expand the scope so that actually everything that's not listed as specifically excluded is a free speech zone. So if the Superintendent President approves that revised version, then people can be outside the Admin Building, they can be in the hallways of the Admin Building, and they can express their ideas. So that is already in the modified version. Classrooms, offices, the bridge, and certain facilities in the PE building, there are certain designated areas that are expressly excluded. But other than that, it's open. And if it hasn't been posted to the website, it's because there's the Superintendent President also needs to have an opportunity to review that and post it. But that document went to all of our Governance Groups and BPAP reviewed it on multiple occasions. And it's very helpful if we have a student there who can review it with us. That's great. And we also have a student appointment on the Academic Senate, and the Academic Senate reviewed it. So that information has been out there for at least two and a half months.
Yeah, could I respond to this? Yeah, it was just basically, yeah, I was looking it up and didn't see the updated version. Honestly, with a lot of our committees this year, it's been rough. For us to have our students, we're a little bit lower on numbers than we have been in previous years. Last year's board had 18 members. Now we're down to 10, 11. So, but yeah, I completely agree with you. We missed the mark when it came time to speak up on BPAP. So that's why I'm just bringing it up now while everyone's here. Thank you. Thank you so much for your comment. I really appreciate it. Yeah, just on civility, I had a question for Dr. Bibi. Can you give us an example of incivility on campus?
Well, I think the recent email flutter that we've seen is a good example of how we don't treat each other the way I think that we want to treat each other. And I know you've seen some of that and we've had some discussions about it, but that'd be one example.
Well, I just wanted to say on that, you know, there are areas in the country that have a lot of incivility. Let's say crime, for example. But there is a root cause of that. There's a reason why people act out. Maybe in your eyes or objectively, they act out. But I think that there is a root cause. And I think until we don't solve that problem, then we will continue having these. Because people, I think, are angry on this campus and really frustrated. I want to say every single person, but I would say that it's building up. And I think it's the job of the Administration to target those root issues, which many of those will be discussing as well. But I just wanted to say, on civility, if someone's acting not civil, I would ask them why. I wouldn't say be civil, because there's a reason why they're not to be civil.
So I think civility, respect and dignity all kind of need to go together when we talk about this. And I really do think that it's all of our responsibility to help shape what that looks like. It's not going to come as an edict from somebody. That's not going to solve the problem. It's deeper than that. And, you know, for me to just put out a blanket that we will be civil to each other isn't going to solve the problem. It's a behavioral issue and it's, you know, it's easy to jump on bandwagons and kind of get emotional about all this. But it's much more difficult to keep yourself maintained and controlled and have the conversations, the important conversations that we've had and continue those discussions going forward so that we can tease out exactly what the roots are to the problems that we're talking about and be open to hear those. I'm certainly open to hear about it and that's what we're sitting here for, is to learn about that.
I would argue that I believe it does start from the top. Leadership is very important and people will follow suit if you take a stand. And when there's no accountability for people's actions, you're going to continue to have the behavioral problem. And that's a thing that I've noticed is an ongoing problem at SBCC. It's kind of like all this conversation, no resolution, and then no accountability for people's actions. So when there's no accountability, you will continue to do the bad behavior, so.
Hi, I'm Josh Gregg. I write for the Santa Barbara News Press. Sir, you mentioned an email flutter and you may have described it in I had a hard time finding it. You might have said it in the first five minutes, but yes. Could you just, for the record, tell me what that was?
No, I can't get into the specifics of that. But it's been a conversation that we've had here across the college about a series of different issues that have come along. And I can't get into the specifics of it if you're not on the actual email communication itself. But it's just one example of how I think most of us would believe we haven't been treating each other the way that we probably should be or respecting ideas that are broader than ours.
I was just going to say that I agree with Dr. Bibi that there is a strong feeling of cultural contribution here that comes from outside our institution. When David mentions anger, I think there is anger in many parts of the country as a whole, probably the world, about many different issues. And somehow, permission to be not civil has become culturally okay. So I was kind of hoping that our students and our faculty, thinking about this as an educational institution, would look at this as an opportunity to talk about these issues in the classroom, to talk about different viewpoints and how do we express ourselves civilly? And how do we not express ourselves? How are we not meeting that standard? You know, what are the ways for civilly disagreeing? And what are off limits? And try and get a good conversation going in the classroom because I think it can apply to many, if not all, subjects to talk about those issues.
Picking up on that, yeah, I think it's a maybe we can agree on this, might even be some value in that, that it's much easier to agree that we should all behave civilly to each other. I don't think, nobody's going to say, no, that's a bad idea. The trick comes in identifying at the moment whether someone has crossed the line and become uncivil. And I think our civility is to some extent guided by the passion of the moment. And that's what moves us across the line. But if I say, well, you just crossed that line, you might say, well, no, I didn't. I just feel strongly about it. So maybe what the point of agreement that we can come to here is, this is tough stuff. It's not easy to define. And what we have to trust, I'll hold myself accountable for this, is that we will try, that we will listen more carefully. And maybe, maybe all sides need to accept that, that listening is really part of part of a civil society. Listening carefully is a part of a civil society that actually works. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Seen this kind of thing happen in the business world too. Seen it affect companies and how they, whether they prosper or fold up. You know, it's morale. No, I saw a guy one time, he told his, he's told his whole staff and his sales force that everybody had to start getting along and like each other and be civil. Didn't work because he didn't practice it. And all his best people quit. To create it, like if you were in Dr. Bibi's position or in this, or the Board of Trustees' position and you guys on board, it happens how you get it to go downhill from you, and it does have to start at the top. The young lady down here was correct and she mentioned that. It has to start at the top. But the only way I've ever seen it work is when the top the top, the top people live it as an example, that they exude it, that it shows through their actions, that they care, that they don't hold grudges against people, that they talk to them, that they care enough to find out what the person's really saying. If it happens to me now and then, I don't understand what somebody's saying and their points are making. And, you know, I may be flustered or, you know, not happy about it. And I seek them out and I want to talk to them. I want to see if I can really understand what they're saying. Because if I get upset about that, it means I don't understand. So therefore, I don't agree and I'm afraid. And, you know, so, you know, if we could lead by example in how we solve these things, we set an example and that helps to set the tone for the whole, for our whole campus, for our whole family of faculty and students of everybody. I think you could look over the past few years at least, for sure, at this Board of Trustees, at the Board of Trustees for the college here. We don't always agree with each other on things, okay? And we vote differently sometimes and we have deep feelings about this college and we share common goals, but we differ in some ways on different methods to achieve those goals. But somehow, we manage to talk to each other about it. Sometimes people get wrapped up in what they're passionate about. And without passion, most people don't get anything done. So you need a little bit of that. Sometimes people really look for and want to express their passion and their ideas and their hopes. And when you're listening to other people that are saying things, I think you have to be, have the attitude that you really want to understand. And you have to be a little bit forgiving about how they express themselves because if they're emotional, it usually means they're passionate. And if they're passionate, then you need to be a little bit forgiving about how they voice that and try to really understand. So if we can, I can't make, I can't, I don't know how to make people do that. And I don't know how to pass a law that says you have to do it. But we can pass a resolution or something like that to encourage that kind of action. And then the heavy burden is, as leaders, we have to live it and exude that and set that example. Because if we don't do it, we can't expect everybody else to do it.
Yeah. I happen to agree with you on that last part.
Well, we don't agree with, not too much, do we? But we talk to each other. We are more than civil.
Yeah. Well, one of the things in my view, I think that is uncivil, that kind of happened before the email thread, was the fact that our Administration didn't notify the community about who was attending our institution and the controversy around that. People want to know. That's what they want. Our society, we have an SBCC society here. And our society here wants to know who is coming to our campus. I understand that we may not have properly vetted that person before. That's okay. But communication to say, we apologize for not properly vetting, we will take steps in the future. There's still, it's May 3rd. I believe that event happened like a month ago, something like that. And we still don't have an email out. So I think that, yeah, so I think that it's, I think that that was the, how do you say, the original sin, the first uncivil act. And then students respond to that. People respond to that because they're angry. I think for us to say, don't be angry or be more civil, it doesn't go to the problem. The problem was their response to another issue.
I appreciate, I appreciate that comment and I'll own that. If I, if I didn't communicate that out or I should have communicated that, you know, that's on me. I apologize for that. And, you know, try to do better in the future. I think the whole idea of when we, and we've talked about this, Dr. Drone and others have talked about this idea that when we have somebody come to campus, I don't think we've really ever done a full vetting to the extent that we probably should have on an individual. So like I say, I own that. I apologize for that if I drop the ball. But I want to also follow up on something that Gregg talked about, which is forgiving a little bit and having some grace when we don't necessarily do everything exactly right. I don't know if you had a chance to sit in on the. I don't know if you had a chance to sit in on the, the panel of formerly incarcerated individuals that came to the college? But the last speaker, she talked about a concept called radical grace. This idea that, you know, it is, it is for, we have to be, we have to give people grace in order for us to be able to communicate and understand where other people are coming from. Because I, I may not say everything exactly right, I may not do everything exactly right, but if I can get a little bit of grace, we can still have a conversation without people, you know, stomping out of the room, being upset to the point where, where there's no communication at all. So I think a starting point with this is one, owning, owning the issue. And I say, I, I own that, David, that, that's something I did. But also, you know, asking for a little bit of grace so that, so that the conversation can continue and we're not giving up on each other. And I think that's, that's an important element to all this because when, when it really comes down to it, if you look around the table here, we should all be allies of each other. And I think that everybody around here wants to be allies. We don't know how to do it necessarily, and so we ask, we ask for your help in that sense. But, you know, you have allies here. And so, I mean, to, the, the whole us and them thing really, in my mind, is a, is a false dichotomy. And it's one that I think is more damaging than it is helpful. Just wanted to say that.
So one thing I think, like, is important to realize is there's a lot of privilege in being able to be civil. You might not have as much to lose as someone else, you know, you might not have to go home to certain circumstances as someone else. So there's a lot of privilege in that in itself. And then just again, getting back to that accountability piece, you know, you're asking people to be civil, but there's no accountability for people's actions when they do things and then you expect people not to be angry. There's this James Baldwin quote that I always, always go back to. It's, "We can disagree and still love each other unless your disagreement is rooted in my impression and deny, my oppression and denial of my humanity and right to exist." A lot of these comments that are being made are causing people very traumatic experiences. I've experienced it even up until this week where I missed three days of classes because of harassment by a person that works here, her husband, making comments about, about me, about my workplace. And I get it, I'm very vocal on this campus and I'm a target. But again, where is the accountability? And how do you expect me as a student to be civil when they're attacking my very existence as a black woman and as a student coming from the margins? So I think that first realizing just that there is privilege in being civil and we can't just jump to, let's all kumbaya and hold hands because there's hurtful things that are really being said that are causing people to drop out. If I hadn't occupied as many spaces as I do and if I wasn't as educated as I am and just quite frankly, as strong as I am, I would have dropped out this week. It was very traumatic experience. So again, where's, where's accountability? You can't expect me to be civil in a situation like that where I'm underprivileged. And I think that we, we jump to, to solutions that just aren't attainable. You know, it's like, let's just all sit down and figure this out. But ignoring all the pain, it's, it's like when I think about slavery, get over slavery. But there's never been an apology, we haven't received reparations, you know? There's so, there's so much getting to the root of issues, the real root of why problems exist. It's like putting a Band-Aid over it. And I think that's like first steps are, what are some, what are some ways that we can move forward? And it is holding people accountable for the things they say. And not apologizing once I, weeks later, months later, once I'm telling you that hurt me, apologizing because you held yourself accountable for the things you said. I think trainings will help that, better faculty in services. I know we're working on that in EEO. I definitely think we can get there. But I think just opening your eyes and, and realizing that it's, people don't wanna sit down and kumbaya with some people because some people are really pissed off at some people. And that needs to be recognized, not just telling people, let's just sit down and be nice to each other. There's some people, quite frankly, I just don't wanna be nice to because it's rooted in my oppression and denial of my humanity and right to exist.
Not anymore, but he's been raising his hand for a minute.
Oh, I just have one question about the speaker that was talking about that. Is this the affirmation that Michael Shermer?
I don't think that we can answer that because I think that that goes sort of to the point of this civil, you know, people think different. So for us to say, was that him or is that, would be a acknowledging the claim with the, you know, fact of it, so I don't. Yes, does that make sense? That Marty, if you wanted to add?
Not yet. I was just gonna say, I, I agree because we're talking about subjects here where everyone is not necessarily in agreement and struggling to find a way. And I recognize what Crystal has just said, that sometimes it's pretty darn hard to find that way. To, to give that grace to the other person, to give that room for a disagreement and recognizing that you're never gonna agree. And that's okay. Because at some point, some things that are said sound like, you know, unless you agree with me, there should be consequences. There should not be any consequences for a civil disagreement. That's, that's fair, fair. For something that is genuine harassment, and I'm not making a judgment there, these are tough things, there should be process. There should be a place to go to say, this is not okay and for it to be looked at and for there to be consequences. And I think that process exists, but perhaps it is not as accessible as, as, you know, it should be or as obvious as it should be. And maybe that's something we can do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking. Oh, please can figure, when I'm thinking, it's hard to talk. You know, there's a couple things, there's more than a couple things here. At first, I have a problem when people, and I think we all are guilty of this, I know I am, think, aha, this is a whatever, and you put them in that category. So that takes care of that. And there's a Republican, there's a, whatever it is. And then you find out that half of those people really do agree with half of these people. So then you have to make up a new category. So pretty soon, you know, you can't quite figure out who anybody is, you know? And so all my life I've been trying to, you know, figure all these categories out. And it's an interesting thing, but it doesn't really work. So it doesn't work to have somebody say, well, because you're a woman, you know what this is or whatever. To make assumptions about people without ever knowing them is very, that's how we get into trouble, that's how we get into trouble on these emails. When you make an assumption about somebody, you just answer back very fast and say, you know, you bully them, because I heard the word bullying. But it's very hard to define what, what bullying is, you know? So this whole thing is very, the whole difficulty. You cannot take notes on what I'm saying, it's just a kind of slide of ideas a little bit. But, you know, having some interest in people as people is probably gonna save us. Having interest in finding out, as David said, who this person is, is probably the best thing that could happen. And having accountability about what you're saying, you do have accountability in that when you say something, it's really very strange. Everybody will go, what did you just say? And I say something, you know? So I think that that kind of accountability is almost very hard to, to put down on paper at all. So the whole thing is very difficult, you know, human beings, being who they are. But I really don't think it helps us to label people or to have an assumption about who the people are around the table and we don't even know them. I think that's a real issue. And I guess I would like to figure out a way that we can all, maybe some points that we can all work on because it's, it's, this is a very important discussion. And it's, but there should be some things that we should be able to do. And I don't wanna stop the discussion though. Because when you say, well, you know, we just won't allow so-and-so on the email, that doesn't work at all. So, I guess, I guess I'm trying to figure out some kind of plan for us.
This is a huge topic and a couple of things have gone through my mind as I'm listening to others talk. Number one is, I, I think what I'm hearing here are things that are reflective of what's going on in our society. And they're very troubling things that are going on in our society. It didn't just start in the last year or two years, it's, it's been building, I think, for, for some time. And I don't know what, I don't know what the solutions are. I hear process, I think that's really important. And they got something perhaps we need to, to, to look at. One of my problems about what's going on here is I'm hearing lots of generalities without the specifics. And it's hard for me to assess what the problem is because I hear the kind of general statements of marginal, marginalized students aren't treated well or things like that. I just, it, it's hard for me to, I spent 30 years practicing law. So I, I tried dealing facts before I jumped to arguments. And it, it's hard for me to get there. But I think one word that comes to mind to me before we actually get to civility is respect. Without, without respecting people, without respecting others that you think you may know what they're about or you may not know what they're about. If you always begin your interaction with other human beings with respect, I think civility follows. The other, and I, kinda like Marty, I've got these thoughts in my head, I'm not sure where it goes. But the other thing that comes to my mind is that 50 years ago, when I was in college, we were talking about very similar things. And, and there were, there were elements on campus who, for the most part, I agreed with, but they were extreme and they thought they had the answers. And if you, you didn't agree with them, you weren't accepted. And that, that, that was a, that was a strong, strong element. There are tremendous divisions on campus, as everybody knows. I know personally and others know from history, but it's in the late 60s and in 1971 at this, at this very moment, in May, the, the country was coming apart. The student, student protest, students were killed at Kent State. But there were tremendous divisions on, on, on campus. I was, I was a teaching assistant, teaching a discussion section in an introductory government class. And we found ourselves most times talking about the war because that was what was on everybody's mind, to be at the war. And I tried my best, I had very strong views about it, but I tried my best to be a neutral teacher. But towards the end of the class, I, I did have a couple of students that kept me talking about something else. So, and that really affected me, it made me feel like, well, maybe I hadn't been a neutral. Maybe I had not done a good job as a teacher in class. So anyway, I, I come back to the word respect. We, we have a system in this country that, that for some people, it deals with disputes. It's called our just, our, our court system. It's a wonderful, wonderful system. And it, it deals with the fact that people can't be civil all the time and you end up in court. But of course, that's not how we wanna generally conduct our society. We have to self-regulate ourselves. Those are my, those were my thoughts.
Trustee Abu, we haven't reached out to you for any comments, so feel free to just, he's good.
He's not.
He's gone, okay, just, you're in our class. Any questions or questions?
So I just wanted to quickly clarify, I guess, this isn't a debate or a discussion regarding civility about Republicans versus Democrats or about what's going on in Washington. I think this, this comes out of the whole event and the speakers and things like that. So I'd like to read off the intro to a group that was formed after that whole controversy. It says, "Stand as a growing alliance for all voices on campus that have been silenced and neglected by the SBCC administration. Stand stands for Student Turnout Against Negligence and Discrimination. Our coalition formed following the backlash of the school's failure to inform us about the speaker, et cetera, et cetera." And then there are demands, which are policy initiatives, right? And I think that this is one of the ways that we can move forward. Rather than just continuing to talk about it, I would be more than happy to send this document to the board. One of the things that it speaks about is black students being neglected on campus. If we look at the statistics for our black students, they're not looking too great. One of the things we can do is acknowledge that and reach out. An apology needs to be issued, President Beebe just did that. I hope Ray Napoleon receives that as well. Mark McIntyre, being the organizer of the Faculty Colloquium, this is a person that has stirred controversy and has, in my view, although he's a friend, has divided our campus. Our campus doesn't need to be divided, the students are united in interests. I mean, inherently, we're all in, you know, united in interest. These are just three out of 11 of the demands. So I guess what I'm trying to say is this isn't about disagreements, this is more about policy issues that students are responding to. And I think that one of the ways that we can move forward is address those, those policies that they're asking about.
I agree with David on the policies. And I think too, just, a lot of issue is just like clearly defining what we mean when we say these things. Like, you know, like respect, so I just looked up the definition. "A feeling of deep admiration for someone or something elicited by their abilities, qualities, or achievements." So when I hear that, I'm like, someone can still respect me but use racial microaggressions. Someone can still respect me and be misogynistic. So can we get clear definitions of, I would love SBCC to say, this is clearly who we are and this is what we define as respect. Because I read all those campus emails, did I? I felt those were, some were very uneducated, but, but I didn't feel like nobody resorted to cussing anyone out. Like, from where I'm from, I didn't see anything as being disrespectful. But on the educational aspect, I saw a lot of things that were disrespectful. So can we just get clear definitions? I think as a, as a, as a school, as an administration of what we would define as respectful. Because I saw respectful responses that were very misogynistic. I saw respectful responses that had a lot of racial microaggressions in it. And those, that's, that's where, and then you talk about civility, that's where uncivilty comes from. Like, that's where anger comes from, when people that are educated, people that are doing this work, this equity work, people that are involved, people that are a part of the margins will read between the lines and they'll see that. And then respect just goes out of the window. So I think just really defining what we wanna say is respect and really thinking about that hard. Because to me, the definition I just read, that's, any, I've had people come to me all the time and talk about my abilities and my qualities and still have, for me, been, used racial microaggressions or been misogynistic, so.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me.
Yeah, I wanted to try to put, give some comments, I like to underscore because I heard so many great thoughts shared.
Can you speak up, I'm having trouble hearing.
Yeah, it's heartening to hear, hear these ideas of offering others deep admiration, civility. I'm, I'm studying therapy and there's been a revolution in, in therapy closely. It feels very new at the first time. But one of the great thinkers has been seen as Carl Rogers and his major contribution has been to the way two people talk to each other in session. This, this could be a conversation between any number of people, but when you pay someone to listen to you, you're paying for healing because you have some issues. He said, "You need to have..." He said, "You need to have unconditional positive regard for that person." So, so that was good, but I think that, that's what we need, um, for healing. We, when we have violations, we send some people to prison, you know, bad things happen there. They take away those people's rights, and then they have riots and you feel bad, you're civil, you're civil in ways that's been in time. When people go and see a counselor or therapist, uh, results are very good. They grow as a person, they develop themselves, they become a better person and they become happy. Not that they make great achievements, but they are more comfortable with themselves at that point. And that occurs through this deep admiration of the other person, this unconditional positive regard. I wanted to say a thing about anger, because there are a lot of people on this campus who are angry or get angry. Somebody says something and you feel angry oftentimes. In psychology, that's just a surface feeling, anger. Yes, you are in fact angry, but the reason you're angry is probably because you're afraid. And the reason you are afraid is probably because you have a misunderstanding. And you get a misunderstanding with someone when you make generalizations or you simply don't listen to them. And by listen, I mean really listen carefully, thoughtfully, while offering deep admiration to that person. And I think we would do this if we, if we were at a Special Olympics Competitors Meeting. We would be very, very kind to people regardless of their circumstances. So, and we can offer that to each other.
So, no further discussion, questions, I'll move this on to equity around SBCC associated student government. And before we started, I did mention that, we're in the middle of comments in two minutes. So use your self-assessment and kind of do that. I'm gonna give you the floor because I feel that your thoughts and your decision are important, so just keep mindful of that. Otherwise, you're gonna hear that by the seaside on the iPhone. Okay, equity around SBCC, equity around SBCC associated student government. And the Board of Trustees and the SBCSG will discuss the barriers that hinder the SBCC ASG. Did you want to open yourself?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Um, I, like I said earlier, I did have a document, I'd like, I can read it off or we can pull it up.
It's sent to you, he'd like to request to make all of the document, how feasible is that?
I can hand it to you right now.
You've sent it to me, yeah.
Which email?
CL Nelson Ivy at headline@sbcc.edu.
I don't know if all of us will be able to follow the size below twelve point, that is not up there at this distance, but we will certainly try.
Yeah, I have the same issue sometimes. More coding. Okay. I did a question, what, how much time do we have to express?
For this, I think we'll, we'll say fifteen, if anybody objects, fifteen minutes. And then that gives folks, there's about fifteen, we'll expect to hear, so give you about a minute or so.
Absolutely. Um, so to start off, um, I really, uh, this, this document was put together by student government and we actually approved it in one of our meetings. So this is a reflection on all of the Associated Student Government when expressing equity around the SBCC ASG. Um, so these are some of the things that we're not necessarily expecting Board of Trustees to, um, solve. But we want to give the Board of Trustees a clear picture, what the Associated Student Government has to go through and why there is kind of a disconnect between the Associated Student Government, the administration, and the Board of Trustees. Stuff that keeps us kind of in that darkness, which I feel is a true reflection. So, um, to start off, what would help us, um, the Associated Student Government is, uh, access to the all-campus, um, emails. That's one of the thing, one of the things that's kept us in the dark when, you know, um, all our VP resigned. We, it took us a while to actually hear about that and that kind of affects how we are gonna run in the future. Um, there's a lot of other things that have happened in those emails that, um, would help us when we're getting public comment from students that we don't even know, um, are happening at the time. Some of the members on the board or some of the students do have access to faculty members. So, um, that's just one, one of the things that would help ASG. Um, and I can move on accordingly.
Yeah, we will dedicate fifteen minutes total to this topic.
Yeah, totally.
And so, if you want to move through that, we'll have a decent dialogue in the session.
Second thing is, uh, requesting conference attendance, encouragement from the administration. It's, it's too often that the ASG has been here and, um, like, for example, the, um, even events such as the Student Services running an event around equity, the Associated Student Government wasn't invited to that event. So, um, just keeping us in mind would really help, uh, with us making better decisions when it comes to equity and organizing ourselves and presenting, um, issues we see on our campus that revolve around equity.
So, can I ask, may I ask a third question? Which, which exactly are you gonna use?
It was the, um, the lecture, um, I forgot his name. The one that you brought me to, they had, it was before Dr. Taran Johnson.
It was an event or a conference?
It was an event, it was an event on, on campus and equity event. For this, for this.
For high school students?
Not for the high school students, it was for the student services.
Oh, and that was throughout tunnel, and it was a training on racial microaggressions.
Okay, microaggressions.
Yeah, that was throughout.
Yeah, yeah, so stuff like that. Um, and then over the winter, they actually, a, um, a lot of people went to an equity conference. So, stuff, stuff like that would help, Associated Student Government. Next, we have more low-income, we, it, student government doesn't have a lot of low-income students and getting more women on ASG, that's kind of one of our priorities. We've had this issue for a long time, especially the low-income student issue. Uh, we only have two students on our board that are in EOPS, which, um, I believe last year I was the only student that was in EOPS on our board. So it's hard to look through that lens of, um, you know, being a student who's low-income on our board. It, it's hard to, to get those perspectives. Uh, so what would help with that is maybe having HR, the HR department may be giving us a training on equal opportunity when interviewing our candidates and ratifying them on our board. Um, so another thing that was brought up during our meeting was there's a committee on our activities fee that doesn't have a student on it. So this is number four. We approve, um, money that goes towards student activities, but there's also a committee on top of the student government that is, there are no students on this committee. So this committee is another filter that decides whether or not our decision goes through and is finalized. So what, all we're recommending is having students on that board. You know, I, one of the recommendations from our, um, the Associated Student Government was having at least half our students on the board, the students, or half of the, or the committee members being students. That would, that was one of the recommendations. Another thing is that the ASG, and this is more of an expression, that they feel like there's a disconnect from the adminis, adminis, administration and this goes back to the conference piece. The Associated Student Government feels kind of forgotten about at times, um, just because I do understand there are initiatives that are happening and, um, and people kind of just forget to take a step back and slow down and kind of look around a bit and just recognize that we are here and, um, we are here to give input as well. So those are, let's see, we have, the next one is meeting on recognition and I wasn't here for this portion, so I do want to hand that out to David.
Sure. Um, so in the summer, uh, the Associated Student Government tried to meet multiple times and through our advisor and, uh, the Vice President of Student Services, our meeting was not recognized. Uh, we had a letter sent to us, um, kind of outlining, uh, and there's an email thread about this which, um, which basically with our advisor speaks about our terms not starting, although they did. President Bibi, I spoke to you over the summer about the meeting not being recognized. This is, I guess, just one example of the disconnect from administration. I believe the student government receives their legal power from the California state, from EdCode. And, uh, as long as we're within our bylaws and our legal obligations, we're not breaking any rules, I believe that we have the right to assemble at, at any point within our terms. And so that was just an issue that came up in the summer and then one in the fall, which Josh will, I can hand it off back to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, so, so this all sums up, uh, to sum everything up, we have the last item. And like I said, I'm, I'm reflecting the whole Associated Student Government Board. This was voted on, this document was officially voted on and passed through. Um, it comes down to, um, the last part, which is feeling as though, um, our advisors have become an opponent, opponent rather than proponents of the Student Senate. So, um, this, there's two pieces that have made the Associated Student Government feel this way. One of them is the meeting ban in the fall. So we've been directed, and there are documents that have been sent out to the, all of the members, you'll see the documents that have been shared with us. We've been directed not to meet in the fall after we were, um, there was an investigation pending the activities of the student government as of July first. And then the second piece was an investigation, a Title IX investigation on, uh, gender discrimination, which is still pending as well. So, we were directed after those had, had been put through not to meet. And, you know, we know, we knew we were able to assemble still, so we continued to meet after that. So, um, the second piece is, uh, a cancellation of our Southern Regional Retreat. This is a conference that was, um, we approved twelve thousand dollars on and it was geared towards, um, informing our students, our leaders and, um, in student governments all over California. We looked at inviting all student governments all over California to our campus and, um, informing them on equity. We had a trainer, Dr. Trainer, Dr. Darla Cooper, ready to come out and teach us about, you know, equity and how we can better represent our students around, you know, with issues revolving around equity. Stuff like fundraising, we're gonna have Jeff Green talk about how to fundraise and how to plan events. So a lot of those kind of issues, even having individuals, incarcerated individuals, uh, in a forum to talk about some of those issues. So that was shut down and I have forwarded some emails revolving around that as well. So, um, and the Associated Student Government has been left in the dark without answers to why these things have been shut down. So yeah, that was the last thing when it comes to some of the barriers that we've had this year.
Just these three, bad questions. The immediate process still up here.
I don't, I don't hear much that I disagree with. A little bit surprised that most of those things aren't already being done. And that would give us a chance to ask the administration to respond to that. And to hear if, if there's another side to this, then I'd sure like to hear it.
I just, you know, because we just think back on civility and, so I work in education too for our district. And, um, you know, often it's like, well, that's central office and I say our central office. And I have fire under me for these literacy, to see these children late. And as you can see, public education is probably similar to higher ed public education with its limitations. I would like to request for you guys to consider, or our social student body to consider going forward, instead of that administration, you know, our dean, our vice president. I think that sometimes, you know, we don't get to the pressing issues that are so important to us personally. But off the bat, I know that we've never dropped the ball for students on articulation agreements. And you can log into us, s, dot org, and we have some of the most vetted top-notch articulation agreements with some of our most prestigious, um, higher institutions. And so that's like an extreme point of our administrators, our, um, city services, our faculty, you know, putting things like that. And so that's just kind of a side note because I think that would also help the conversation to say, okay, our dean or our advisor, my advisor, my advisor advises me. And maybe in the future, some more trust can develop to say that if my advisor advises me X, I don't know everything, but he or she does and knows maybe a bigger, broader picture. And so maybe I can offer a little bit more grace and yield to, okay, so the trust, why you told me that. And I know clearly maybe that you're not hearing it or not, but that's just something that I thought of top of my head because they, when you read something like that, it's not that, it's our. Our is Dr. BBR, it's Dr. Gerald, and in their humanity, um, they're in front of us. And us, we don't work directly for the college, but we give our time and our energy, our family's time to be here. And we want to believe that we spend hours of time and diligence in finding you one of the best superintendent presidents because that is the only decision that we get to make as far as running the college. And so I think for me, when I, the or he, like, gosh, we really worked hours. And we would have reopened the job had we not felt that we found a candidate that can address some of these deep rooted issues that as we know, education, I mean, Lincoln Johnson declared the war a couple of years ago. And I remind myself of that as a reading teacher because he's reading one issue several more in the systemic issues for decades. So yeah, I just wanted to note that, I think it was, you know, thank you for bringing it and just maybe in the way it's articulated.
So I wouldn't want the point I just made to get lost and I want to be sure that it's understood. I'm not, I'm not accusing the administration of anything. But I think whenever something like this put on the table, the other side has a right, indeed an obligation to respond in all fairness. It is, it is easy to float littering generalities. And it sounds from, at least in some of those points that you've made, as if there's just a miscommunication somewhere, somebody dropped the ball. These to say, whoop, screwed up. The two most difficult words uttered in the American language, "I screwed up." Well, that's three words. So, I mean, that's, that's where I am with it. I, I, I hear you, I really want you to know, I hear you. Those are good points, but we should, we should let the other side have, uh, have their, their day at court.
Hi, I've given a lot of thought about whether to say this or not, but I've kind of been waiting for twenty-five years to say it and it seems like the time is right. Um, I am the channels advisor, my name's Patricia Stark, I'm also going to be Accudating Center President next year. One of my students is here. And, um, this is what I have been wanting to say for quite some time. And I have not looked at the job description for the Student Senate Advisors, I mean, at all, in any detail. But what I have noticed this first, just very directly over the years, is that the Student Senate has needed, needed stronger advising. And I use channels as an analogy, the college has been extraordinarily generous in terms of providing the student newspaper with an advisor, the majority of my load is being channels advisor. I've got a master's degree in journalism, ten years of professional experience. And I know a lot about how to handle journalism with students. Um, I've been struck so much over the years and my students cover the Associated Student Senate, they cover every single meeting, with few exceptions. So I've seen this year after year after year. And it's my feeling that the college really needs to provide the same type of advisement model to the Associated Student Senate that they provide to the channels. I spend so much of my time recruiting, this gets to the fact of you need more women, you need more low, you need more women. You need more people of low income. I spend a ton of time recruiting, going to classes because I can do it because I'm paid to do that. Um, I spend so much time with my students, training them in every aspect of journalism. What is the Brown Act? What is the, what is the California Public Records Act? What are the ethics of the profession? How do you deal with this situation? I don't know, I saw that thing about, um, my students and I pose each other all the time, so there is some tension there. But I think one of the reasons the channels has been able to succeed year after year after year is the college has been very generous in providing a content expert to help them. to help them, to learn, to guide them, to warn them, to explain to them, to be accountable. And the Student Senate hasn't, I know y'all have advisors and this is not criticism of that, but I don't think this is a big chunk of y'all's job. I have a feeling that all, all the advisors have other, a lot of other things that they do. And our Student Senate, if you're going to fulfill your ed code, constant, you know, what's in the ed code, you are one of four parts of this voting up student government. You need to have some informed expert advisor and the college needs to pay for it. Thank you.
I was just gonna say Patricia raises an interesting idea, which dovetails better in my mind with how we work as a board, because we're at the policy level. And a lot of what I'm hearing is day-to-day operational things, which I assume also come to Dr. B B when you guys meet bi-monthly and that sort of thing. Um, and what Patricia is raising is in part a budget issue. And there is a budget process, we'll be going through it. And it's something that we as a board, I think, are better equipped to kind of grapple with should it be placed in front of us as part of that budget through going through, you know, all of the, the shared governance process. And I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I'm just saying, this is something we see, this is something we hope we understand. And should be dealing with that at a policy level.
And let me, let me just say, I did not mean that to be at all dismissive or condescending to you guys. I just feel that, you know, y'all could use some more help.
So we're at our 15 minutes. If you guys have something, we could wrap it in 15 seconds, you know, all four of you have. And that way you can try to focus along.
Yeah, um, so I think it's really important when we talk about what issues the ASG has to really look at this document and understand what we're trying to say, rather than try to guess what our issues are, because we are very clear with what our issues are. To create a committee on student taxes, which the ASG will deal with, which are made up of zero students. And to not bring that to the ASG as an idea, to just put it on the ASG is not called shared governance. And in my view, that is a reflection of the administration. And I have to say the administration, because that is how the administration speaks to us, the district. So when a meeting wasn't recognized, it was the district doesn't recognize your meeting. So therefore, the only, you know, way we have of speaking about it is the administration, because that's how it's communicated with us. And so when our administration creates this committee without consulting with the ASG, that leaves us out. When we have our own committee and we give suggestions and they're not discussed, that leaves us out. And when our right to assemble is violated, that's a big one. I mean, the, in my view, the activity fee failed because students didn't see what we can do with that activity fee. It lost resounding on the referendum. And one of the things that Josh wanted to do was to invite all club presidents to this Southern Regional Retreat, so that all students can assemble and speak about issues that are concerning us. For the administration to shut it down, I think violates our right to assemble. And so this is an operational issue, of course, but it is also an indication of a systemic issue. What is the view of the Associated Student Government by those who administer the college? I think we really need to ask that question.
Um, I guess I'm kind of a little conflicted with this discussion. One being just because, you know, it's my first year on ASG and as I don't understand so much of everything. I also think we need to think about work ethic and this is just me being honest as well to the AS. I feel like I got a lot accomplished this year personally, but that's because I went out and did it, continued working. And I would say just to the AS to also look at the other side is I also observed a lot of people not doing what they were supposed to be doing, giving up and not going out there and constantly getting it. Now, not saying that's because you weren't getting roadblocks, but let's also take that into consideration as far as like getting stuff done and doing what you had to do. Cause I, I felt like the accomplishments that I wanted to make, I made this year. Might not always been the easiest, but I, I did what I had to do. So that part on the AS and then the other part on the school is I've also watched my AS members struggle to stay excited to be on the board because of being blocked. So I also sympathize with them for that. I personally don't take no for an answer, so, but I know not everybody thinks like me and not everybody is me. So just supporting all thinkers on AS and their approach to this work we're doing. But also to the AS, just taking responsibility of the fact that a lot of us gave up at times. And me being a black woman and being marginalized, you're not allowed to give up ever. So the wheels of social justice move slow. So, you know, if it's a fight, we have to keep fighting, then, you know, that's what you have to keep doing. I personally have had to fight all my life. So that's something that's just equipped in me, but also realizing that a few of us did give up. And, um, cause I can't sit here and say that I didn't accomplish what I wanted to, because I did, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, so in, so for this piece to be talked about at this meeting, I had some people approach me and there were some concerns with what is going on with student government. So the guidance that I gave my ASG is I asked them, what is going on? And we formulated this document in response. So it's not necessarily bringing it to the board, saying, hey, can you give us some answers? It's more of like, this is what we're going through and we want you to see our lens. Empathy is a huge thing with equity. So that was all we kind of headed towards when get, when presenting this.
Yeah, and I think Josh, if, if, if you take that document and frame that as a, a plan that, you know, we can work on together to address those issues moving forward, I think that would be perfectly appropriate. I mean, and, and, you know, we all can do things differently and, and better and to support and empower those student government. So, so I think if we, we use that as some framework for some good productive dialogue over the summer, maybe we can have that vehicle for, for next year, next school year is to, you know, really addressing some of those barriers.
Thank you for articulating some next steps. Okay, well, seeing as this is no further discussion, do you?
Can I have a closing comment? Thank you for recognizing me first off. Uh, I just, I mean, first off, uh, I would like to point out that, um, and this is a deeply contrary to my patriots or colleagues. I will say that I would like to thank the, uh, our administration for, first off, the activities fund. I mean, we did get that, but it was also like, we kind of don't trust you that much. It was like, here's the money, but we're just going to make sure that everything you do is, is, is whatever, according to this committee's rules, which are kind of not like explicated, it's arbitrary in some sense. And so I think the root of like how we actually feel is it's just that we're not trusted. I mean, everyone on the board is 18, we're all adults. When I was 18, I had to sign a letter saying I'm willing to be drafted by the United States military. And so it's just that, it's just this feeling of like, oh, like we're not trusted. Like the only time we ever really hear from the administration, and not throughout like shared governance, because obviously when we're partaking in shared governance, it's a very collegial feel, uh, everyone trusts each other. But it's just every time we get these random notices out of nowhere, it's always just, you're doing something wrong. And then we consult someone, like someone, like our parliamentarian slash attorney Lorenzo Questa, who, uh, is an expert on Brown Act. He is an expert with the S S triple C, so he knows the Student Senate and what you are and aren't allowed to do. I lost my point. But yeah, basically, oh, and then so we checked with him and it's like, all right, you don't have to listen to this, what they're saying, because it's not true. And so it's just like every single time we go through this process and it's like, oh. And it's not to say that, that people are against us. I don't think it's a me versus them. I think it's an us versus problem type like situation. And so again, it just kind of comes back to this trust thing. And I, I want to thank the board, uh, chair and our president for having this discussion, because I'm so happy that students are finally being put at this level. The Associated Student Government is actually being recognized a little bit better than it has been in the past. And with that, I yield my time. Thank you very much.
So moving on to equity around students, the board decision that S P C C H U discussed the barriers that hinder S P C C students.
All right, so, um, I guess we'll start this one again. So there have been, I've been on this campus for a long time and I do want to recognize some really big things that I've seen on this campus, such as the promise. These are some really amazing things. I'm really proud to be a part of Santa Barbara City College. The, because of stuff like the promise, our food pantry that's on our campus. This is something I've talked about for a long time and it was finally put into place. It's, it's amazing that we can feed our students and put food on tables and the lines start, you know, stacking. Other things such as, you know, the amount of, um, you know, the, the, the amount of work that Anthony has done with, um, working with our community. You know, we've had a lot happen this year when it came to the line slides and the fires and for people to make quick decisions such as canceling finals or moving school down a week. Because we do have low-income students in Carbon Tria. It, those are some hard decisions to make, but they're extremely important when it comes to success for students. So some of the recognized things that student government sees that we could do better on our campus, keeping that in mind. First, we would like to recognize that, um, we do have a homeless student population on our campus. And some of the things we would like to recommend is having our home, opening up our parking lots to them. That's something that we would like have a discussion about. I know LA has taken a, taken initiative on this. Uh, I know many students in STEM that are homeless. I myself, uh, I haven't had stable living since summer. So I haven't really even lived in a, a place for, you know, consistently for more than a month. So it's kind of like, it's a big issue on our campus and, and student government wants people to, wants the board to kind of take that initiative to kind of recognize, um, that, that it is an issue. So that's the first one we, we want, Associated Student Government wants to recommend, um, going towards. And then the second one is housing security identification and a proposed long-term plan for that. So identifying our students that are homeless, seeing how many are homeless on our, on our campus. I, I've checked with IT and I don't believe we've actually tried to extract data like that. And if it is, it's not a lot of data. And a long-term plan, we would love to work with the board trustees on a long-term plan for that initiative, such as, you know, um, you know, looking into buying or building housing for underprivileged students, regulating the rent somehow for those students. That would be something Associated Student Government sees, uh, that would be helpful. The third is involvement with Affordable Unit Density Project. And I actually want to hand that off to David, because that's more.
Sure, yeah, that just goes back to the housing issue. The city has developed a housing plan called the Affordable Unit Density Program. It's very controversial because the percentage of developments being made are above, the majority of them are above 120% of the median income. These are direct, that's, that will be the reality of the city. Housing will be built for people with higher income than lower income. What does that mean for our students? That means more homeless students over time. That means students struggle with rent. Another example for city politics regarding housing is vacancies and basically kicking students out. We have a huge problem with that as well. I personally know like five people that have been, uh, that have kind of been chewed out of their place. And so I guess the overall theme of that is to, for the board, I mean, we believe that we can all be more involved with city politics. And it's not a partisan issue because it's about a specific program. It's not about a candidate or a party. Um, and I think in that light, we can definitely work on our Santa Barbara community directly in that way.
Thank you. And then the last one is extending the library hours. So I know we've had some budgetary cuts on campus, but for access, we've seen it as an issue for students who work, you know, long periods of time. And there's just, you know, of course we have Alabista around and students just can't study in that kind of environment. So, um, keeping a space in our area that would allow students to be successful, such as having an extended study space or extended library hours would really help with the success of our students. Um, and this also would meet the board goal of student success.
Just these students.
Can I add something to this?
Louder.
We'll be, the letter will be open until 11 in the last two weeks. And that, I think that starts probably next Monday. Not sure of the exact date.
Okay, from when in the morning?
Um, seven 30 in the morning until, um, our, our regular hours are seven 30 in the morning until 10 PM Monday through Thursday. Um, seven 30 to four on Fridays, 12 to five on, on Saturdays and 11 AM to 10 PM on Sundays. And, uh, but just for the last two weeks of this semester, we're going to stay open until 11 on the nights that we are currently open until.
You're talking about till midnight or beyond?
Yeah, I know a lot, I'm in the STEM, uh, community on campus. I'm a computer engineer, that's my major. Um, I know a lot of STEM students who actually will stay in classrooms on campus till 10. And they'll get kicked out by security and they'll have to go find somewhere else to study just because our workloads are really big. The STEM community, there's a lot of work involved with, with, with our classes. So, um, a lot of them actually go to UCSB. They try to pass off the students over there, um, because UCSB's library is open 24 hours. They close the doors at 9 AM or 9 PM. I know that because I've been in their class 9 PM myself, so. Uh, and another, another thing we could do is maybe even talk to UCSB about maybe an agreement on opening their doors to our students.
I would think.
You mean the library there?
Yeah, yeah. So that was like a second, that was a second thing maybe.
I know that in the past, they used to offer computers for students who were not UCSB students. So it's my understanding that that's not the case anymore. So there would be problems with access to library resources, even if you do have access to building. But I don't, I don't know if it's possible to compare. I, I did want to just know also that our weekend hours are funded by a donor. Otherwise, we would not be able to have the weekend hours at all.
So, um, I'm a single mother, so I went through the Summer Bridge Program Spark. It would be nice to see more support for the single parents here on this campus. It's quite sad, the numbers for the people that start the program and don't graduate. All the people I started the program with are no longer at this institution because of the lack of support. So just, um, things like, um, I'm thinking like in the library, it'd be nice to have a place space. There's so many times where I would like to come and study, but you know, I have my children. So it would be nice to have, maybe if it was just even on the weekends, um, a place space, place space that you could come and you're, and study and your kids can stay there. And honestly, to the Summer Bridge Program is not enough and it's kind of a setup for failure because you start and you take really not college-level classes. And I get it because they're trying to ease us into it, but then they jump you into a semester of a full load of classes. And that's where we lose a lot of the women. So it would be nice to see an extension of that program into the semester, offering those single parents more support so that they can continue on. Long-term goal, even a year of the program. And then I feel like the next year, they should be in a space where they can continue on. Just as a single parent, I mean, the research is out there. So many articles have come out that, you know, more single moms are attending college but struggle to graduate. Um, and we're raising the future and it's really hard. So it would be nice to see just a little bit more support for them because I watched so many of my friends not be able to continue on and drop out. And then to, uh, I, I didn't know, but I saw the email come out from Elizabeth in the library. We have a lactation room, but that wasn't publicized very well. For a long time, we didn't know that. When I first started, I was breastfeeding my son. That's like information that I feel like needs to be better put out there because there's a lot of breastfeeding mothers on campus as well, so. And maybe even faculty staffs.
I also wanted to add that our group study rooms in the library are in extremely high demand. I also wanted to add that our group study rooms in the library are in extremely high demand. But we do allow parents with children to reserve a study room on their own without other students. In other cases, they have to be just, you know, for groups of students. But you know, that doesn't help. May still be distracting for parents, but at least you can have, you know, your own space and bring books down from the, the book collections.
That moves us on to.
So just a couple of things. I think Santa Barbara City College, one of the reasons I came here from Georgia was because I knew it was the best city college in the United States. It's number one. And I did notice that it's number one, of course, being here. I think that we can be number one in many other aspects. One of them being reaching out to our homeless community. One of the reasons why I heard our parking lots aren't opened are for liability issues. That's the same reason our Southern Regional Retreat was canceled was for liability issues. I think instead of kind of being worried about what the result of an action would be, I think we could actually think big and we could say, wow, you know, we have a huge parking structure on West Campus that is completely empty for hours. And there are many homeless women who don't feel safe parking around at 2:00 or 3:00 AM or homeless men. Sometimes I don't, it's kind of, you know, scary at times. I think another thing we can be number one in is extending our library hours to 24/7. And we can replicate UCSB, that might be difficult, but I think that is a budget priority that we could maybe consider. I believe that if our library was more accessible as UCSBs, I think our dropout rates would be way, way less. And our recidivism would be way, way less because students would have access, no matter what their income or whatever, to be able to go and study. Because that's what they're here to do. So I think that these are something, some things that we can explore if we're not afraid of it.
Can I just say, try to be quick. These, these things really touch me. I, I've talked to several students now on my own separate page about housing issues. I remember getting through college was hard enough. And I had, you know, I remember renting space in basements next to boilers, you know, the furnace and some, you know, because that's all I could afford at the time, but I had a place, I had a bed and I could feed myself. And things were probably cheaper then. And now we live in a society where housing is just, it's not just on campus, it's a critical problem. Countrywide, California in particular, and we have a significant issue in Santa Barbara County. So when I hear about students that don't have adequate living, I, I don't know how they actually get through the day and study, what they do their assignments and, and be rested to take tests. So I don't know what the solutions are, they're, they're all economic. In one way or another, I think it's, it's a dollar a cent issue and there's limited dollars and cents. So I, I, I don't have the solutions, but it's something that I can say that I think we need to continue to pay a lot of attention to.
And Chuck, okay, just to clarify, so I don't think we're talking about homeless as the same. So homeless like not having a home are homeless because they moved to Santa Barbara to study at A S G C, but my home's in the whole area.
I'm talking about students that have no apartment. They, they're in their cars or, or they're living in inadequate housing, you know, six, seven people to a small room. That, that, yeah, couch surfing, that kind of thing.
But they have a home maybe in the Bay Area or a home in, in their parents'.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think in Santa Barbara, we do have homeless population, but don't have a home, we have homeless families.
Except that the descriptions I've heard come close to, to that.
Yeah, no, let this be, I'm just going to be like, I could be homeless, but my home's in Monarch Creek.
Right.
Don't have to see. Okay, we'll, we'll move on, do you guys mind? Because we do have to move on. It's student trustee, also the board, the ASG wants to discuss this, we're defining the student trustee role.
Yeah, so this one is actually pretty short. So there was an issue a couple of years, a year ago with our trustee on the ASG board was kicked out of their position. And the trustee position at Santa Barbara City College is interesting because they serve on the Associated Student Government Board and they also serve on the Board of Trustees Board. So if they're removed from one of them, they're not removed from the other according to our policies. So all we are recommending is combining that so that it reflect, the, the, the position reflects the position on the Associated Student Government Board. Pretty simple.
So just a little further explanation, many colleges, the trustee is the Associate Student Government President. So they're one in the same to avoid the, the issues that we had, you know, some time ago. It's just a different model. Ours is a little different in terms of how we go about it, but it's something to certainly think about and explore relative to current, current operations.
Would you be proposing to change that, your constitution to provide that?
Yeah, I mean, whatever needs to be done, we would, we would be willing to reflect that in our bylaws and constitution.
I think we have some board policies that relate to student trustee that might need adjustment if you did that.
But I think essentially, yes, their business.
I, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying that you'd want to make sure that it all hangs together.
They get to determine that. They can change and you should take care of that by switching or changing your constitution.
And it's, it's going to be in the, the board policy, I believe, is where we would have to change things. Because last time it was, it was that separation because of the policy, so that's, yeah.
Cool. No, I just was pointing for anything because I, I wanted to clarify that you were talking about not what Anthony just said about the president being the trustee and about, I, I figured it out, figured it out.
Did I, did I say it wrong?
No, I thought that after, because right after you made that comment, she asked to change the constitution. So I thought we were gonna talk about what you were talking about, about how the president is the trustee. And I was like, wait, are we talking about that or are we talking about, so I got.
Is that like something that a local law?
That is an idea that we haven't really gone into. For now, my only worry, I'm always like a procedural person, I care about what's done right and I care about consistency and I don't see consistency with those two positions. And the, that conversation, I'm definitely willing to have down the road as well.
Can I acknowledge your suggestion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the main point behind this is, like, let's say theoretically, we have someone that just starts slacking like mid semester and like not attending anything. We take them off the board, they're still on the Board of Trustees and so even if we impeach them, we've lost our liaison between the two groups. And so now we're just like, okay, now we have no power, like, like, or at least no say in this conversation. So that's kind of the point behind it, thank you.
I think that, to answer my question, but if I understand correctly, the idea is to empower ASG so that they can remove their Board of Trustees represented from the Board of Trustees.
That's another way of looking at it.
That's fine, yeah. Any other comments, questions?
Kind of an overthought or additional thought as, as we've gone through this agenda. And, and I was wondering, a, a theme that I think I heard was that you felt a little bit forgotten, not recognized enough. And I have noticed, for example, when I try to find your agendas, your minutes or special website, the website says under construction. I really can't find those things. And we had a discussion earlier this year, Crystal, you were there and about greater transparency on those things and basically putting you guys on board docs, putting you guys on live streaming because it's this bill, it's this room you can. And to me, that would greatly enhance your visibility, not only to students, but to us, for example. We could see what you're talking about, we could hear what you're talking about. So that's one suggestion. The other one that occurred to me in this meeting is, what if from time to time, the board on occasion is discussing a policy level issue and they say, I want to know what the ASG thinks about this issue? If we had some agenda item that, as again, not every time, but from time to time, we could then send it to you guys and say, we were discussing this, what do you think? And that becomes an agenda item for you, to increase the communication back and forth between us.
I thought we were kind of already, we were doing it in kind of an informal way, we just let the president know that we needed or would, and desired it and they would follow up with you, but.
But I, I'm thinking really outside the participatory governance context that, you know, I mean, something that comes up and we say, I think, and obviously we have a student trustee here, but just maybe getting it into the system a little more formally to stop and think, do we have something we'd like to ask ASG?
And I did want to respond, your, your comments about the recorded meetings and the board docs, that's actually, I love that you bring that up. We actually had the same conversation with the channels. And it comes down to, we actually have started recording our meetings, we've recorded our last five meetings, but they're not posted. And this has to do with access, such as I'm not able to get access to the accounts that have our videos on them. Which is like, and also, you know, me uploading them, that takes time and when our board, you know, I've had four resignations this entire year. And then not having people because of resignations, you don't have people to run the website to create that transparency. So I love the ideas theoretically, they would be perfect. But we've run into these other roadblocks that have stopped things such as recording meetings or even putting our agendas up like online in an accurate place, which we have fixed, by the way, they are on our website accurately now.
Clyde's thinking that we can probably fix that, right Clyde?
Just real quick, I believe there's something in place to hopefully create some of that. It's in the works and it's not going to happen right away. So there is a way that we're going to be able to put your work things into YouTube. That that's completely possible, but we're still working on details on that.
See?
Solutions.
Here you go.
Yeah.
One more note, it won't be as, I don't want to say fancy, but as quick as the, it won't have a full livestream effect, but it will be.
And accessible as a video basically, like the other YouTube.
It's, it's going to officially be a total webpage. If what we're planning turns out right, it'll be essentially just like the Board of Trustees webpage, the ASG will have their, we need that for.
What do you think about that?
It's awesome.
I personally would love to be on board docs, that's how the other committees are structured, organized, I like it, it's accessible. But to comment on like overall and just the equity around students piece that we talked about, just really going forward, continuing these conversations and really thinking of, about ways which we can better support students that are facing inequities. Because I know we often have these hard conversations and I know I come in rooms blazing hot sometimes, but I have learned so much from this school and this experience. And because of everything I've learned here and the inequities I face, I'm going to go on to do great things from this experience. So I would never take away from the fact that this is a great institution where I've had the ability to do things that my cousins that go to school, junior colleges in LA would never even imagine me doing. My cousin talks to me all the time and she's getting her masters and she's like, wow, I, you're going to get a job straight out of college because of my resume, the amount of conferences I've been able to go to. But with that said, I want to see other people that look like me, that are single moms, that can get this experience, that have access. Because I do realize my privilege in being from Santa Barbara and having family live here, this is why I'm able to be at this meeting right now. This is why I'm able to be able to commit to ASG. So just going forward, really thinking about those students that are getting a miss out on these great opportunities. Because I've had, I've, I'm always gone. And I, but I'm happy about that and I'm grateful to this college that I've had all the experiences that I've had and the support that I've had around that. But just thinking about my privilege in that and how do I, we, how do I make that accessible for those other students that are facing these inequities that stop them from being a part of stuff?
Yeah, I did just want to kind of looking over all of these items and kind of goes to the conversation I had with Robert the other day and to what Matt is saying. You know, these are all operational issues for the most part. They're handled by different people and positions on campus, whether it's the president, VP or our advisor. But I think these are, just some examples of many, I've had students come to me, for example, and speak about sexual harassment by department chairs on this campus. Of course, that didn't make it into here, but there are many, many examples of things going on on this campus. And something that I spoke with one of our trustees about is, these are an indication of systemic issues. These aren't just random problems that we can just fix and everything's all good. I think we need a really deep analysis of what's going on and I think we'll definitely be doing that in the future.
That's, that's interesting. Or was it you? Oh, I, I thought I saw your hand, I was going to say to you.
I couldn't hear you when you responded, that's okay. But I appreciate the comments about this college being great. It is a great place. It's a phenomenal educational institution. I appreciate my privilege, I understand my privilege, I'm learning about my privilege. But I do understand a privilege that is, is grand in terms of being able to work with you all. And I, I don't want to lose something that Professor Stark said that she took 25 years to, to say, I want to make sure we, we don't lose it. And that is, is the advisors that we have for you, the support that we have for you. Professional development, I think is going to be a critical piece of all of that and I want to follow up on that and make sure that that happens. And I, and I don't think it's just professional development of the advisor or of you, I think it's of all of us to be involved with that. So that we can, there, there's things that we can do together to learn about aspects of, of making this place better. Whether it's equity, whether it's, I'm looking down there, she's the future president right there, so I'm, I'm just, you know, to get this place in shape before she, she's ready.
Of the college or the nation?
Of the college, well, of the nation, college first and the nation. But anyway, I, you know, I just want to, I don't want to lose that because I appreciate that comment. And you do run a tight ship with the channels and I, and I think it's a great model. And it's one that I think we ought to be thinking about in terms of, of student government.
Great, so last little thing, I would like to make a mention for you right after this.
Last one, real brief. First, I'd like to stand there, thank you. As I sit through the meetings and make your whole big long list of what's wrong and what's happening. And made a whole bunch of notes of things to like think about and follow up on, at least to make sure it stays in my mind. So I write these things down and then I, I remember maybe six months from now, yeah, that point. You know, or I get a chance to have an informal conversation with Dr. Beebe or someone else. We have the Brown Act, so it's a little hard for us to like, I can't talk to her and then, and then go and talk to her and then talk to someone else, I'm invited, I can't do that. You know, so that, that does make it hard at times, but and then we have a reporter in the room and the channels is usually here listening to us.
Hi, my name is.
There, yeah. And they, they must think, wow, these guys don't have their act together, all this stuff's wrong. And I'm very proud of you as a student. And, and you said, and you said something positive to close, close the meeting on. And that, that provides us motivation to work even harder to, to become number one again. I think our faculty and staff would like that Aspen Ward again. And the only way to do it is to be better than everybody else. So if you don't set lofty goals, you will not meet that. And then I have one final comment and I'll be quiet. Dr. Beebe, maybe this, this trustee would, would ask what it, what it would take to put the student government on board docs system so that it could function. what it, what it would take to put the student government on board docs system so that it could function better. And there may be reasons for not being able to do that and I don't know what they are, but I just, as long as you're gonna look at that. I think that would be the ideal thing as opposed to just giving them the website. You know, maybe for their board meetings. Yeah, yeah. I like that idea a lot.
That's a good idea.
I don't know, but if it costs too much.
We're already down the road on this.
Um.
I'll leave mixed tea.
Oh, so I'm, I'm just taking in everything. Um, I think, no, it's, it's honestly, there's a lot that goes on in student government. So I may seem like, you know, in my mind at times, even walking down the campus, people will say, Joshua, what's up? I'm like in my phone, I'm like, hey, how's it going? Um, it, there's a lot that goes on. So, uh, I, like I said, I do want to thank the board for having us here. Um, this is a great college. I, I did my first internship in the summer and they were blown away with how I interviewed with them. They're blown away that I'm used to teleconferencing and how I dealt with, um, going up the ladder when dealing with issues internally. They were like, wow, we have high expectations for interns after you. And it had to do with a lot of the things that I learned at Santa Barbara City College. So there are a lot of positive things here, more than, um, the negatives, I'd have to say. But in my position, it's, you know, when you sign up for president, it's more, you're signing up for more problems. So I'm constantly thinking all the time about how to solve those issues. And it's, I, it's a privilege. I, I really love the, the duties and I love seeing the passionate students that are, that have to be on this, uh, that have to deal with student government, the passionate students outside of student government. Um, I love doing this job, so.
Yes, that's good. And take it, take it from.
He's done with politics after this.
Actually gonna try to own my.
Don't try, do it.
I just wanted to thank the board, uh, the Association of Student Government, everyone who came and, uh, the administration for as much uh, grief that we give, uh, this school still, the, one of the tightest, like shifts, like in the United States. So I, for being the crown jewel of a hundred and fourteen California community colleges, the largest public school system of a higher education in the world. Absolutely phenomenal. So, and I, with that, I'd also like to thank our advisors, um, especially Amy. She's served as our institutional history for twenty years now. So she gives us all the logistics, the advice. And I just want to thank you. So thank you very much.
I just want to say that I'm looking forward to serving with you guys next school year and, uh, learning ways to have civil conversations.
You know how to do it.
I can be a little bit.
Well, you're gonna get practice.
Yeah.